Well, bring this meeting of Peterborough City Council order for Monday, August the 11th, 2025. Our first item of business is our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we're on the treaty and traditional territory of the Mississauga of the Ashen Abic. We offer our gratitude to the First Peoples for their care for and teachings about our earth and our relations. May we honour those teachings. Our next item of business is 30 seconds of silent reflection. For those that are able, if they could remove their hats, please stand for the singing of the National Anthem. Thank you very much. The next item of business is the reading of the constitutional statement. The Council of the City of Peterborough recognises the principles G'day in our constitution and the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. The next item of business is approval minutes for May 20th, June 9th and July 2nd, 2025. Councillor Burke, Secretary, Councillor Faciliatus, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. I may ask? Kerry? Does anybody have a declaration of procuring interest at this time? Councillor Dugay, please.
Your worship, yes. I will declare a conflict. This pertains to item 11E. It references monetary report. The report is FCSFS25-0115. A family member is co-owner of the planning consulting company providing services to the property owner.
Of any, thank you. Councillor Crowley, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to take an interest on 11A to through to 11E only because I wasn't present at the closed session last week.
Well, now, next we'll go to our, our consent items. 10A, anybody on 10A? 11A? They'll all be separated out, Mr Clerk, right? Okay. Well, we need to see if anybody wants to discuss them, right? 11B, anybody on 11B? 11C? 11D? 11E? 11F? 11G? 11H? 11I? 11J? 11K? 11L? 11M? 11N? 11N, okay. 11O? 11P. Councillor Hickey wants that separated out. So we'll deal with, since councillor Crowley, oh, I'm sorry, 11Q, Q? 11R? R? 11S? Oh. 11? T? First of all, we'll separate out the ones that councillor Crowley declared an interest. So we'll, someone could move A, B, C, D and E. Councillor Burke, councillor Hickey, comments or questions? On E, that's right. So we, it's been pulled out. So we'll deal with A, B, C and D. Councillor Crowley or councillor Burke moved it, councillor Hickey second. So we'll deal with those first. Make it nice and tidy here. Comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. My system isn't working, John.
His worship is a yes.
Someone would like to move F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M? N, O. Councillor Faciliatus, Secretary of Councillure Chica, sorry. Yeah, I'm just keeping going. P, Q, R, S, T? Was moved by councillor Faciliatus. Councillor Purnell, comments or questions? That one's been separated. And N's been separated, I do. Sorry, councillor.
Just, P was separated out, was it?
P's been separated out and N's been separated.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Little rushed here, so. Councillor Faciliatus. And that's Kerry. Councillor Real, 11N.
Through the chair, I just want it separated out. I won't be speaking to it. I spoke to it last week. I think I made my point. I just want it separated out for a vote.
Okay. Someone like Kabouit, councillor Faciliatus, councillor Crowley. Any additional comments or questions? Councillor Dugay, please.
Yes, your worship. I would. I would like to thank staff. I think we're aware that a successful recruitment of two doctors, I believe, hailing from the British Isles, serving to replace existing practices, while it's not new, but it was important that if they weren't replaced, we have a further shorter. So congratulations on Chantel's in attendance. If not, please convey my thanks to her excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dugay. Any other speakers on this? It's been moved. We'll go to a vote. And that is Kerry. Councillor Hickey, 11P.
Thank you very much, your worship. I'd like to ask for a deferral on P similar to last week, if I can.
A second or?
A second or?
For the deferral. Councillor Crowley, go ahead. Councillor Hickey, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. The, my deferral is to ask the committee to contact all of the people that are listed or ask the city to contact all of the people that are listed and get a yes or no to the designation. 11P? Yes, that is correct. 11P? Okay, thank you very much, your worship. I'd like to ask that we do speak with and get a yes or no from each of the property owners. The reason that I say that, and if we look at the amendment that we voted on in a past quite handily last week, which was to remove the church property because they did not want it designated. This is exactly what I'm asking. We removed it because they asked it to not be designated. So I'm asking if we can get that upfront before we vote on these. Now, I do have a question and I think it's, I think it's for Blair. When we sent out the letters saying that these properties are going to be put on the registry, not registered, but on the registry, do we send those letters out registered mail?
Through the chair, I'll answer and I'll defer to Director Appleby in case I've missed anything. But at this point, since council direction was to send it out through registered mail, this point forward, we are sending it via registered mail. So we have feedback that they received it.
Thank you. There, there was a bit of confusion at that point. At a later date, I'll move something else, but that's, that's what I would like to see is the owners of the property give a yes or a no if they want it on the registry. Thank you.
Councillor Chica, please.
Thank you very much, your worship. Through you, just speaking to the deferral, appreciating my colleagues' comments. However, you know, our, our provincial government issued a PPM, Provincial Planning Statement 2024, and emphasized a great deal, and I'll be, I'll be speaking to that briefly later, but about the importance of procedure in our Heritage Act. That this isn't, it isn't criteria based, related exclusively to the owner. Whether an owner wishes to or doesn't wish to designate their property is not the criteria for something not to be designated. And, and it is really part of the process is for the public and the community to take the opportunity to hear the designation brief and be educated and understand the significance. And, and that's what the PPM, our conservative government has issued a PPM in 2024 related to preservation and having a comprehensive strategy for designations. We know that these are going to be falling off the list as of December 2026. So timeliness is essential. So for us to wait to hear from each and every person based on a criteria that is not the ultimate criteria for whether something will be designated, we're wasting our time and we're not getting to those things that need to be done. And it could be an indefinite period of time that we would wait for some people. It's also redundant because we have sent the information to owners via registered mail. They are asked for their feedback and are given the opportunity to state that. So it's redundant and it will also be time consuming with an unlimited timeframe. Thank you very much. I can't support the deferral.
Thank you, Mayor Leal, and through you to the clerks possibly. The screen that I see and then also up on the main screen, the deferral is under the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. So the, the screen that I see. Yeah, and 11Q on my screen is Renewing Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. Is that what you're talking about? Yeah. Yeah. So I think, yeah, so I don't know. I, I, I would like to speak to the deferral, but I think that it's incorrect. What we're discussing right now, I think we already passed on consent, the item around the designation list. So I'll leave it there.
Thanks, your worship. Just as we speak, we're, my colleagues are correcting the title here.
Thank you, Mayor Leal, and through you. So, you know, I was here last week when we had this discussion and I don't, I don't support the idea that we need to explicitly ask people yes or no. Do they want their, their property to be on this list? It's not a designation. It's just on our list at this point. I do believe that by a way of process, there is a chance through how we're doing it for people that whose properties this affects to have their voice heard, whether that's through their elected official in writing or at this meeting. I think though, my feedback on, because, because I think last meeting we were asked, a councillor asked that we be sent the letter that the property owners received. And my feedback about that to staff is that it didn't at all, that letter didn't at all outline what the impacts, what the impacts would or could be of a designation. And this is feedback that I've heard from property owners before, saying that they got a letter, but the, the information they were seeking as to how a designation could or would affect them wasn't clear to them. And so my, my comments would be to staff that I think it's important for us, if we're sending out these letters to people that are going to have their properties be listed and/or designated, that we summarize to them, to the property owner, what the impacts of that means for them, both, both positively and negatively. Because I know that if I receive this sort of letter that we were copied on, if I receive that at my house, I would have more questions than answers from that letter. And so I think it would help for us, or maybe through PACAC, to figure out a way to explain to the property owner what, what this letter they're receiving means for them, what a heritage designation could mean and what it means for them to be on this list. Thank you. And, and that being said, I believe that the process is in place currently, in, in place, well enough in place currently that I don't think we need to ask explicitly at this point, yes or no. And I don't think it's reason enough to defer the work that is being done through PACAC and with our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Burke. I have councillor Hickey for a second time and councillor Dugay. Councillor Hickey, please, second time.
Thank you very much, your worship. And, and I have to agree with councillor Burke is that the letter that we sent out is confusing. So it's not redundant, but it is confusing for people to get it because they don't know what it means. They don't know what to do with it. Fundamentally, I'm a big believer in property rights and if I own a piece of property, I'd like somebody to ask me when they're going to do something to my property. The government gives us the ability to pick and choose, but that's up to councils. So it's not law that we have to approve everything on the registry or, or register a property. So that's the, that's the gist of where I'm going with this, your worship, is it's property rights, which we do not have defined unfortunately in the constitution. But I'll tell you, they mean something when somebody's trying to do something to your property and affect, and it does affect the value of the property. We've, the confusion comes, and I haven't seen the letter myself, but I have had people call me and said, what is this? Basically, if, if we were clear, that's for another day. All I'm asking for is to defer this. And I realize that time is of the essence, but it doesn't excuse us not being fulsome in, in allowing people the opportunity to defend something that's going to be on their property. And if I can, one question to Mr Potts. Mr Potts, if a property is registered, does it go on title?
Spots, please.
Councillor, I'm going to have to, your worship, I would have to go back and check. That's a specific procedural question. I don't have the answer for that this evening, but I will undertake to confirm and advise.
Okay, thank you. I, I believe it does, but I would appreciate an answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Dugay, Real, and then councillor Chico for a second time. Councillor Dugay, please.
Thank you, your worship. To my colleague councillor Hickey, I cannot support the deferral. Yes. We have a process, a council directive. If my colleagues will recall from last meeting, in which staff pursuant to confirmation from Commissioner Nelson and Director Appleby indicated that a letter by registered mail that would be fine tuned to confirm with the concerned property owners. Your property is currently listed. Council's had a discussion and they're contemplating moving it to designation. Councillor Chica has rightly stated that Heritage Act doesn't explicitly say a property owner, we have to ask their permission, but it's been our practice. And I, I find it will be one of several criteria that we must consider when the designation brief prepared by staff arrives at these chambers. So I don't find there's any purpose, councillor Hickey, in this deferral. We have a process, we have a council directive that requires the registered mail proceed. A process will continue. Staff should still prepare the designation brief. And we could have at time of decision, confirmation from a staff saying, property number A, while it's recommended to be designated, be aware that the property owner in writing has confirmed they don't wish it to be designated. To me, it becomes a factor we must consider. However, if there's no response and the property owners, and we provided a registered letter, we've gone through the process, we have a public meeting, they're not represented and are attending. As a councillor, and I think my colleagues could only construe that, that that property owner does not have concerns. So my perspective, and I, councillor Chica and I have chatted about this regularly in our portfolio meetings. We need to move forward with these properties. They're not all of the listed. There are several. These are the priority properties. We respect the directive or the input from PACAC. Let's move forward with the process. And councillor Hickey, when these reports come forward, one of the pieces of information we will have from staff, whether or not there is a willingness of their concerned property owner have their property proceed to designation. So I cannot support the deferral. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dugay. I just want to go to Mr Potts for a moment. You have an answer to the question.
Yes, your worship. The answer is yes, not surprisingly. Change of ownership doesn't defeat the designation bylaw, which is registered on title to the property. Thank you.
Councillor Real, please.
Through the chair, I will not be supporting the deferral. I think councillor Hickey has made his point that he doesn't support heritage of any kind, and when it impacts the homeownership. I don't know what would happen to the city of Peterborough if we didn't have a heritage registration. I had a relative come from Victoria, BC, and said he was just blown away by the downtown. He says, but what he is, and he has a stonemason in the restoration business. He says, but when I look at the buildings and the decay that's going on, that you have a beautiful downtown. If we don't preserve what we have, the heritage, this is a tourist attraction for the city of Peterborough. Why do people go to Europe? Because of the heritage and the buildings. And they walk, they spend, and they look at what Europe has to offer. Well, if you tear down everything that we have in the city, then you will have nothing to show of the heritage to city people. Therefore, I will not be supporting the deferral. We have a process in place. I think it was discussed last week of what we're going to do. Staff is quite aware of what we're going to do, but I will not be supporting the deferral.
Thank you, councillor Real. Councillor Chico for a second time.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Your Worship, through you, um, just to the, to the points that have been articulated very well. Um, I, I appreciate what my colleague, um, fellow liaison, Councillor Dugay has stated, and I, I won't need to reiterate that. Um, the fine tuned letter um, is adequate, we, we do need to make time. This is just fifty of seven hundred listed properties, and, and we want to make sure that um, that due diligence and, and uh, an updated Heritage Act is followed, we're a council that follows legislation and um, yes, there are differing opinions about um, designation. Um, but this is, this is a public process, and part of the reason that we have a committee that brings things forward is so that the public can have input and an opportunity to speak to this as well. Uh, so thank you very much. I will not support the deferral and um, um, then, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Chica. Councillor Purnell, please.
Thank you, Mayor Lille and Chair. Um, I do have a question through you uh, to staff, so we have talked and made council motion about a registered letter going out. Um, but that, that was also supposed to require a signature. Is that part happening where the registered letter does require a signature, so we know it has got, has been received by the correct person? Because sometimes it's a board, a board of directors, not necessarily an individual homeowner.
Mr. Nelson, please, or Mr. Appleby, Mr. Nelson, please.
Through the Chair, um, I do believe that's a requirement of the registered mail, is that they will receive a signature for that letter at the, at the receiving end. Um, the challenge, I guess, is I don't think there's an ability to designate who specifically signs for it, it's just the fact that there is a signature received that confirmation that the letter has been received at the designated address, is my understanding. I will defer to Director Appleby if he has anything further, but I don't think.
Director Appleby, please.
Um, through, through you, I would say that is all correct, and Canada Post Magical Website confirms that for me.
Nice.
Councillor Purnell.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you very much for closing that loop, that's really important. Um, and I do appreciate the comments around the table, I, I did read the letter that was sent to us, thank you very much for honoring that request from last week. Um, and, and I do agree that it does not really, it says, okay, here's the process, but it doesn't really say what the consequences, yea or nay, um, or pro or con are of what this could mean. I think uh, we, we could expand on that information. Or if you seek more information about designation, please, you'll click on this link or call staff, something like that. Um, I agree, we could be a little bit more transparent on that. Um, I do also agree with something that Councillor Hakey uh, said once before, you know, silence does not mean yes. Silence is silence, does not mean consent. So unless somebody actually says yes, I do agree, I welcome designation on my property, it could mean no, but it doesn't mean yes unless they say yes. Um, that doesn't mean, um, like heritage is important, I absolutely agree, and there's some properties that absolutely must be protected. Um, but then there are some circumstances, as we have seen, you know, with the, the church cottage where they're so damaged. Um, we, it's, it wouldn't be fair or responsible of us to force the, the church to try to rebuild that when they don't have the means or the motivation to do so. Um, and it will sit there for decades with nothing happening to it when we know there could potentially, early days in the planning uh, for desperately needed housing. So there are times when we have to use some common sense um, to these various things. But I do, through you, uh, Your Worship, um, additional question, please. Um, not in the report so far are the, is the actual statement, the homeowner agrees or the property owner agrees or does not. I've had to contact planning staff each time uh, to get contact information, I've reached out to the property owners unless they have specifically said to staff yes or no, um, I, I will reach out to them and try and confirm that for myself, which I will share um, as, as I can with colleagues. Um, can we please, uh, through you, Mr. Chair, ask staff to uh, include that information in the report? If the property owner has specifically said they welcome designation, or um, they would like a reconsideration, and they're not really um, in favor of it or seek more information, could we please?
Maybe Director Appleby could help us here. Director Appleby, please.
Um, Your Worship, I, I would suggest that if council would like staff to ask that question or include that specifically, then we can certainly take that under, under advisement for uh, future reports.
Councillor Purnell.
So would you suggest then a motion under new business that we add that to the report?
We could do that, yep.
Okay.
We could hold off until then, we can.
Okay.
We'll handle it, that, if that's okay with you.
That, that sounds perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councillor Burke for a second time.
Um, thank you, Mayor Lille, and I just, I continue to want to say that I am against the deferral, I feel that um, in the discussion about us putting the emphasis on whether or not the homeowner agrees or disagrees, um, the discussion about, you know, individual councillors reaching out to the homeowner, I don't think, I think that's a dangerous path to take for us because um, the process allows for us to have all this information. You know, when I think of the designation briefs that have come to council, there's always been um, a category in, in that informa, in the agenda package um, that deals with the homeowner. And we've had homeowners that have come to speak to council. Um, our role is not to be the arbiter of whether or not the homeowner wants their property to be designated or not. Our role is that we're the arbiter of, of safeguarding the culture and the history and the story of our city. And I can think of examples, actually, where um, you know, someone could take ownership of a property, let's say the Market Hall, and have plans to develop it, and I think it would, it would benefit us um, to see through a designation in that case, because we may want to decide at that point to preserve something like um, the Market Hall, and, and that's what this is about. This is about um, us having a process in place that looks at how council can safeguard and preserve the culture and heritage and the history of our city. And it was raised by the previous speaker that these are important things um, that set us aside from other cities our size, is the history um, and, and the architectural history of our city, and as a councillor, I think it's important to me um, to, to want to strive to, to protect that when we can. And, you know, I'm appreciative of staff um, creating lists like this so that we can fast track this process and get as many of these designations in front of council as possible, um, including some designations which may come um, which may, may include the, the, the property owner not wanting it, but um, it could be for the greater good of the community for us to um, preserve these properties. And so for that reason, um, I don't support the deferral, I agree with the process that we have in place. Thank you.
Councillor Burke, you mentioned the Market Hall, it was preserved because there's a group that wanted to turn it into a bingo hall. Just a little, a little history there. Um, Councillor Crowley for the first time, and then Councillor Dugay for the second time. Councillor Crowley, please.
Um, thank you, Your Worship. So I think that uh, I'd like to ask if we could amend the deferment motion to include uh, language that would say that we would move it to um, maybe defer it to the General Committee meeting on September fifteenth. I don't know if that is appropriate, if that's possible. Um, my, I know there's no such thing as a friendly amendment anymore, however, I do think that it, it just needs to be tweaked, instead of having a open-ended deferral, having a deferral for one month.
Councillor Crowley, I did hear the date that you mentioned.
Oh, uh, the September fifteenth General Committee meeting, potentially? That fair? Is that a good date?
Is that okay with you, uh? Councillor, it's one month, but yes.
Yes, I just want to check with the court, we're, we're not doing friendly amendments, I'm okay with that, by the way, but
Friendly amendments never existed in anybody's.
Okay.
So it's.
It's friendly, I like it.
Thank you.
We need a second or two, Councillor, Councillor Vasiliadis.
Yeah, um, I, I just think that, that I agree with everything that's been said around the table, I think heritage is extremely important. I think if there's councillors that want more information in the report, they should have it, if we think that residents should um, get a registered letter and be able to have time to get it back to us, and we want to message everyone on that list, then we should do it. Um, but I, I also, um, to Councillor um, Burke's point, I, we are running out of time and we need to get on this quickly, so if we put it out one month, then I think that that would at least satisfy most everyone. Compromise, isn't it great? So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Crowley. Councillor Dugay, are you, are you going to speak to this amendment? And then I'll go to Councillor Chica.
Um, Y- Your Worship, am I speaking to Councillor Hakey's or?
No, Councillor Crowley, we're dealing with that amendment.
I will not support um, a timeline, frankly, uh, Your Worship. If we're expecting staff to prepare and send registered mails and have responses in less than a month, it, it's not possible. You, you just can't, the time, it would not, not be possible. So I, with respect to my colleague, Councillor Crowley, I cannot support the uh, uh, recommended timeline, because it does support a deferral. Thank you.
So on the amendment, we have a new speakers, that's Councillor Chica to Councillor Crowley's amendment.
Well, thank you, Your Worship, uh, through you, uh, speaking to the, the amendment to the deferral. Uh, to put a timestamp on the deferral, uh, to me does not um, make sense when we're bundling and bringing these things gradually. Um, putting a timestamp a month from now, uh, we're gonna be having, we're gonna be having things coming forward in bundles progressively each cycle. Um, so I just, I don't think that it benefits uh, the motion and uh, it, it's leaving us with some confusion. Um, I don't support the deferral, I don't think a timestamp is necessary. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Burke to Councillor Crowley's amendment. Councillor Burke.
Um, thank you, uh, Mayor Lille, respectfully, um, I'm not gonna support the deferral, you know, I'm reading the engagement and consultation part of um, this report, and homeowners, the fifty-six properties were um, notified on March fourth that they were on this list, and then if we pass this to say that the, to go ahead with the designation, they will receive um, a registered letter, and so I think that that, what the councillor's asking for, I think is already in place. Um, and so for that reason, I'm not gonna support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Burke. Councillor Hakey to Councillor Crowley's amendment.
Just a clarification, uh, Your Worship, and I, I'm looking at it now. Um, I want to make sure that we're really only voting on A because I want B to pass as, is, is, is that correct?
Councillor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. Uh, just at the moment, what is uh, before members of council for consideration is the amending motion that was moved by Councillor Crowley and seconded by Councillor Vasiliadis that reads uh, that the deferral motion be amended to request the staff report returned to general, to the General Committee meeting of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. So Your Worship, at the moment, there's uh, there's an amendment before council for consideration, and then following uh, the debate and the vote on that, then council would return to the deferral motion.
Okay, thank you. So I do support the deferral.
Okay. Yeah, you, you support the amendment that was made by councillor, yes. Councillor Baldwin to Councillor Crowley's amendment.
Your Worship, I move we have the question put.
Councillor Baldwin's move that the question be put, we'll, we'll, we'll have a vote on that. Now, as Carrie, we'll now vote on, on Councillor Crowley's amendment. And the amendment is lost. We'll now go back to um, Councillor Hakey's uh, deferral motion. Any more speakers on the deferral motion? You're separating B out, Councillor Hakey?
That was the intention, yes, yes, just A.
The deferrals on just A, which was moved by yourself and seconded by Councillor Crowley. Any further, Councillor Dugay, on that?
I believe, Your Worship, this is my second or third.
No, second.
Thank you. Your Worship, you're very sharp tonight, I appreciate it, thank you.
I have a pretty good list up here.
Um, one thing I just wanted to share with my colleagues that um, there was some discussion uh, regarding um, the, in a report, a designation report, if uh, if there's an information about, was the property owner notified, so it's actually, it's in every one of our executive summaries. So to Director Appleby, I would imagine it would be a simple task of expanding upon that vis a vis when the registered mail was, you know, circulated to the owner and the response, but it's already referenced, for example, on page two of the designation at one eight three hundred Street West, as an example. Thank you.
Any further speakers? We're just dealing with A, which is, is what's been deferred. Any further speakers? I think it's just about exhaustive, it's been moved, we'll go to a vote. This is just A we're voting on.
Uh, thanks, Your Worship, just wanted to clarify for my colleagues' benefit, the, as I understand it, uh, the deferral is only for recommendation A, which uh, is to receive the report for information. So A and B have been separated, as I understand it, the deferral is to do with A.
Councillor Hakey, Councillor Crowley, okay. Next, Mr. Clark. And then we'll need to vote on B. And the deferral is defeated. We're now back to the main motion, as moved to Mr. Clark. Uh, that report IPG PL twenty-five dash oh thirty-seven be received for information, and B, that property at two ninety-seven Hunter Street West be removed from the listed heritage properties. Is that correct, Mr. Clark? That's been somebody, we need a mover and a second, Councillor Dugay, seconder? Seconder? Councillor Baldwin, further comments or questions? Councillor Crowley, please.
Can we separate that out, Your, Your Worship? Separate out A and B, I apologize, is there any way that we can separate that out? Just the main motion, just separate it, separate it parts A and B.
Councillor Chica, please.
Uh, the thing, or, or, I, just before we vote, I'd like to speak to B, if that's possible.
Yes, they've been separated out. We could deal with A first, and then we can go to B. A's been moved and seconded, we'll go to a vote. That's carried. We'll now uh, go to B. If someone likes to move B. Councillor Hakey, uh, Councillor Vasiliadis, Councillor Chica on B. It's been duly moved and seconded. You have the floor.
Um, I would like to make an amendment to B, um, and, and that would be that uh, with the removal of two ninety-seven Hunter Street, that uh, the next in sequence um, property be put in to replace it. So, but we're losing a property because it's being removed, but we have seven hundred properties and our PACAC committee has prioritized them. So what would, would have been next in line as a property would be brought forward so that we wouldn't lose the opportunity to prioritize and make decisions.
Is there a seconder for the amendment? Councillor Burke? Uh, Councillor Chica, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. So I, you know, I'm very glad that we're having a lengthy discussion about heritage and uh, different perspectives are being voiced and, and, and it's important because uh, heritage is a significant piece of our cultural landscape, and as I mentioned earlier, our Ford government, um, with, with new legislation, with Bill twenty-three that impacted the Heritage Act, there was a provincial planning statement, twenty twenty-four, that was put out from our Ford government in the, in the Heritage Department. And, and I just want to share a couple of bullets that, that might help us navigate where we are in terms of prioritizing.
And I just want to share a couple of bullets that might help us navigate where we are in terms of prioritizing heritage. As an economic driver, as a way to bring community together and as a way to focus on a vibrant. And soulful city that has a story, as my councillor brilliantly put it. So the provincial planning statement says that the reason. That the PPS has been drafted is to encourage municipalities to develop and implement strategies to identify. And protect significant building heritage resources and cultural heritage landscapes. Even before development is proposed. That's part of the PPS. This is something that was intended to provoke. Just a lens through which we pursue future development, that this can't be lost. And there are reasons that cities like Pickton, eastern region communities, but Pickton is not a city, but. It's a community that values heritage and then there's a strategic approach. We see Port Hope, we see Coburn. We see various sister cities nearby that are taking the time. To bundle and prioritize heritage designation because it is such an important part of our landscape. It provides opportunities on different levels to protect certain sites. Demolishing is one thing that can be done to create a development, if that's a priority thing to do and that's the only way to go. But there are other ways to integrate, to add additions to existing sites, to enhance its beauty. Its aesthetics. There's a way to retrofit. Heritage conservation can be integrated into mainstream planning. This is all the language of the PPS that our government put out just last year. So I think that we would do well to honor that. And as we build, as we. Approach our housing targets with fervor, we need to be mindful of. The ways that heritage can be integrated into those development plans. And I appreciate that my colleague in this portfolio, you know, we talk about these things. There are ways this can be done. I know we talked about the old schoolhouse and in my mind, it's a shame that we didn't get the designation. Because it would have been nice to learn of all that it is and all that it isn't, so that we could make a designation or not. And that the public would have had an opportunity to say their piece on something that's existed here. For more than a hundred and fifty years. So it's a public process as well as a private ownership process. But all in all, we want to have a growing city that people want to come to because it's aesthetically pleasing. And it has a soul and we see, as councillor Riel says, the infrastructure that existed decades and decades. And even centuries ago. So I think that this is an important amendment to the motion. I wanted to, if I may, ask Director Appleby just a couple of questions related to this. Can this easily be done through our PACAC committee? Can we replace a removed item with the next in sequence?
Through your worship, I think certainly PACAC could identify a property. Among the lists that haven't been included here and added to, for sure.
Thank you. And I'm wondering if it could be discussed that if there was any other property that may or may not be removed. If that could be a practice that makes sense because of our timelines, because we have seven hundred properties. And we want to prioritize the most important to us.
Mr. Appleby, please.
Through your worship, so I think that, I mean, there's a couple of ways you could do it, right? You could. You know, the committee could make recommendations to kind of build onto this list as we go along. Or, you know, you could look at, you know, as we're hopefully successfully moving through designations and getting down the list. Looking at maybe reporting back in kind of one fell swoop at some point, you know, to kind of top up the list. If we find that we're really being successful, right? And then we could come back with another, you know, batch. Of properties, you know, and time permitting that we can try and focus on.
Thank you for that input, Director Appleby, and thank you for being there. I know that there's a lot that we're talking through and a lot of decisions that. That we're making. And I just, as a final thought. Just want to emphasize that there are many, I know downtown, because our downtown has a lot of heritage properties. Lots of communications from residents about. How appreciative that they are of our PACAC committee and that we are doing our due diligence to try and get. As many designations as we possibly can and that this be something that's valued going forward. I'm thinking of our YLOFs and we've spoken about this before. There's an example of preserving. A significant building and being able to integrate new housing development with it. In Toronto, Loretto College School was, is a heritage site, a very famous. Catholic girls' school that is more than two hundred years old, was designated and it's become a wonderful development. So there are so many ways to integrate development with heritage. I hope that we can continue to do that more. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Councillor Purnell to the amendment.
Thank you. I move that the question be put, please.
Question be put. We'll go to a vote on that. Another scary. We'll now go to vote on the amendment that's been duly moved and seconded. We'll go to that vote. Now it's carried. Just on B of eleven P, we did receive a call. My office from His Excellency Bishop Bean last week to say that he was pleased. With the direction that City Council had taken with regards to the Old Stone School. He also reminded us that the Catholic Diocese of Peterborough, which stretches from Lake Ontario to Palos. Almost to North Bay, have been strong advocates at preserving heritage of their churches. I will name a few. Saint Peter's Cathedral has been in a process now of being restored. And in fact, there's an Ontario Heritage plaque on the front of that church to talk about the unique bit of architecture contained in that church. They've also restored Saint Mary's in Lindsay, Ontario, Saint Mary's in Campbellford, Ontario. And they're now in the process, Saint Mary's is very popular, in Grafton, Ontario, which is a church that is a hundred and fifty years old. His bishop said at any time, if members of council would like to tour any of these churches, to see that how heritage is being. Preserved, he would accommodate that request. The Catholic Diocese also has experience in housing. They were the original developers of Cathedral Court. Right across the road from Saint Peter's Cathedral and they also developed Sir Guy Mills Place in Lindsay. So. Two things at the same time. You can ride two horses. Heritage on one side, housing development the other. They want to see the Old Stone School demolished so that they could look at, in partnership with other entities, to see what housing could be built on that site. Amendment. And that is carried. Mr. Clerk, next to business is notice of motion? No notice of motion? The next item, we have approval bylaws. Councillor Lachika, please.
Point of order. I'm so sorry. I voted accidentally in the wrong way on that last one. And I think I was guided by the amendment that I made. If we could have that adjusted. Thank you.
Clerk, we can do that? Have voted on.
A no instead of a yay.
The deputy clerk is just not a yes and that call is just not a yes. And next item of business is approval bylaws thirteen A to E. A bylaw twenty-four dash zero ninety-four to twenty-five dash zero ninety-eight. Councillor Dugay, please. Our file is not included in those bylaws.
Your worship, I was prepared to remove the bylaws in their entirety.
Thank you very much. Councillor Baldwin will second it. Any further comments? We'll go to a vote. And those are carried. Other business. Councillor Purnell, other business.
Thank you, Mayor Leo and Chair, under new business and the clerk may suggest additional wording. But that the wishes of the property order, excuse me, that the wishes of the property owner be included in the designation report.
Do you have a second or councillor Purnell? Councillor Dugay? Debate, comments or questions? We'll go to a vote. That is carried. Colleagues, if you're subscribers to the Toronto Star. On the weekend, you'll see two great profiles about the city of Peterborough. On the Saturday star, August nine, in the travel section. There's a great story called How to Summer in Peterborough in the Quarters. No cabin necessary to enjoy this part of Ontario cottage country. The Star's been doing a series of opinion pieces. Tim Johnson's going across the province to. Profile different communities and if you get a copy of the Toronto Star from Saturday, I'd recommend it. It's a great story. About all the great benefits and places to see and do if you visit Peterborough. And then on the Sunday edition. In the insights section, there's a great story called Doctors and Their Desk Jobs. And a Peterborough doctor is profiled in here, our Fred Dr. Madera. And the work that she's been doing through the task force that councillor Vassiliadis is all about. Another very positive promotional story about what we do right here in the city of Peterborough. So if you're not a subscriber to the Star, I would recommend that you become one. And I have no interest in the Toronto Star, just it tends to have a viewpoint that I might find. Somewhat acceptable over the long term. Confirmation bylaw, sorry councillor Purnell.
Thank you, your worship. I was hoping that you would just let me follow up as co-chair of the fire services.
Yes.
And I think everybody realizes the dire dryness out there. We have not had significant rain in a very long time. There's a little bit in the forecast, but we've seen that before. We're less than, we're seventy-five percent drier all of July and so far in August. So everything is suffering out there for the need for water. So you've probably seen some of the very important media releases that have come out. From our communication department, but I really hope that we can get the word out there because even on this last weekend. With things being so dry, there were fireworks in the city. There were campfires. We know there are fire bans and water restrictions all around us. It's really important that we be hyper careful everywhere in the city with fire. And be very mindful of your water use. Having said that, if you have a new city tree near your property. It costs pennies, literally pennies, to water that tree. And that is an investment in something that will give us. That is a huge asset to us that will only grow and give us lots of oxygen. So a little bit of water for the trees, but restrict your water use where you can. And please be careful with any type of.
Councillor Purnell, I had an email exchange with Jodi de novo today. She's working actively on a series of PSAs. With Chief Nettinger and other emergency personnel to make sure that we're all aware. Of the drought situation that we're now facing and rest assured, she's on top of this situation. Someone like to move the confirmation bylaw. Councillor Burke, councillor Crowley, we'll go to a vote. That's carried. Someone move adjournment? Councillor Bieber, councillor Crowley, we'll go to a vote. And that's carried. Thank you, audience. Thank you, staff, colleagues, and we'll see you a few years at AMO starting next Sunday.